Welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of March 7th, 2013. Just for those people that are just tuning in now, we had our public hearing this evening before this meeting. It was not televised. We reviewed the budget, specifically the summary that we have talked about. We did not have any public input. There were no public participants. So the first up on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes from the regular session of February 28th, 2013, budget and finance minutes of February 20th, 2013, safety minutes of October 11th, 2012, safety minutes of February 14th, 2013. So the chair wants to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
I second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, next up, Cole. What's going on at school?
Well, the reason why I wasn't here last week was because I was going to All States, which was very, very fun. It was a very great experience. My friend Anne Marie Champa also went with me, and it was, we sang with kids all over Massachusetts. So, and it was really a good experience to meet people, but the director was amazing, amazing, amazing person. And she really, really knew what she was doing, and it was a great concert.
Wonderful.
Yeah. And then today was also the blood drive, and a lot of students did that, including me. I gave blood. And that was, it was good. I think we had over thirty kids do it, plus, you know, any walk-ins from the community that wanted to come in too.
Right. So did the kids' parents, like, sign, like, a way?
Yeah, if you're, I think you have to be sixteen with parent signature to be able to donate, and then when you're seventeen, you don't have to have a parent's signature.
That's great.
Yeah. And then today was also the first day of the middle school play. So, it was really fun. I'm the assistant director for that. And it was, I mean, I was astounded by the talent that the kids had. Really, really, really good. And, I mean, I wasn't expecting the first rehearsal to go so well, but it really did. It was really, really, really good.
Can you remind us when the actual performance?
It is the fifth and sixth of April.
April.
And the fifth is gonna be a night show, but the sixth on Saturday will have to be a matinee, because that's also the same day as the gala.
The gala.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's gonna be a busy day.
Right.
Yep. But, you know, yeah, we didn't wanna, at all, you know, step on the toes. You know, parents wanted to go see their kids in the jazz band, and we had, like, five kids in the cast that were in the jazz band, so we would've had to drop them.
Yeah.
So I'm glad that we, you know.
Worked it out.
Yeah, exactly.
So everybody that tried out got it?
Yes, every single person who tried out.
And how many did that total?
Thank you.
How many did that total?
I think it, eighty.
Eighty kids?
Wow, that's awesome.
But how great is that to have eighty kids try out, out of three something?
I mean, it was, my friend and I had three days to cast, and we were still deciding up to the last minute because of the amount of talent that the kids had. I mean, it was so hard to decide, but it was, I mean, they're all really good kids, really open to just being on stage and everything, so I'm really, really happy.
Very exciting.
My, my son Scott came back from it this afternoon, and he was so happy. He just had a great time. He loves the script. He thinks it's wonderful. And he hasn't had any, you know, dramatic experience or anything, but he just-
He seems like he does. He's so like, on stage.
He's rather on the verbal side, yes. I know. You know, so he's having, gonna have a wonderful time, I can tell. So I just appreciate everything that you're doing.
He was, he was great onstage. So, I mean, that's awesome. I'm glad that he had a really fun day.
Thanks, thanks. And we're in between sports seasons now. Unfortunately, are we out of the, all the playoffs and everything like that?
Cheerleaders.
Yeah, cheerleaders are, I think, states.
And Tascua, they're in the states.
Yep. So I think they're gonna do their performance for the school.
Friday afternoon, right after school. So anybody who wants to go, wanna see the presentation, two, two thirty, I think.
Tomorrow?
Yeah, it's supposed to be really good. They're really, really good, so.
Yeah, to make it to the states.
Yeah, exactly.
Pretty impressive.
So, and then, I know, oh, and then we had a couple fundraisers. We had dodgeball last week, which was really fun. Everyone always loves that. And then we had the three-on-three basketball tournament this week. So a bunch of, you know, kids from the school just played, and then everyone else watched. So, it was fun.
Great. Alright, moving along.
Busy person.
You are.
He's very busy.
If it's okay with the committee, we're gonna have the GAA turf presentation, and if they have people that would like to speak on behalf of the presentation, I'm gonna have them do it at the time they make their presentation, as opposed to speaking now, which is our normal course, is public comment. If anyone's opposed to that, let me know. That's okay?
It's fine.
Okay.
We did it like that all the time.
So.
Do you wanna move up to present?
Well, yeah, I was gonna say, we have key club first.
Yep.
So Ms. Monjo, if you wanna come up here, and you can talk to us about that.
Hello.
For those of you that do not know me, my name is Heidi Monjo, and I teach history over at the high school. This is Jen Killian. She's come with me tonight. She's the vice president of the key club.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. So as the advisor, the new advisor to the key club this year, we're seeking your approval for an overnight field trip to the annual conference. It's for all the key clubbers of New England, and it's going to be, I believe you might have the information, but it's at the Marriott Hotel in Springfield, and it's the weekend of April 5th, 6th, and 7th. A couple of things that I just wanted to note with regard to the financial report that I needed to fill out, the financial information. It's accurate that the cost per student is a hundred and fifty dollars, and it's accurate that the cost per chaperone is a hundred and eighty dollars. What I forgot to note is, as I was looking through the paperwork, it is noted on one of these pages that the parking fees are not included in the registration fee. So, of course, I would take care of that and look for reimbursement for that. And on 7H, it asked if meals were included, and my understanding was they were included, but only some of them are included. So, we're on our own for dinner, but, you know, Friday and Saturday dinner, we will go to the food court and get some hamburgers.
Really good food, actually. Oh, goodness.
So Jen went last year, so I thought maybe she could enlighten the committee about what the experiences were there, so.
So, last year when we went to the conference, we got the opportunity to meet with all different key clubs from all around New England, and we got to see the different kinds of projects and service opportunities they had been participating in. My favorite part of the conference was we got to go to this service fair where clubs set up poster presentations all around this big room, and you could go and look at all the presentations, and they're all about the big projects they'd done throughout the year. And by talking to the people there, you could find new ideas for your own club to do and new, like, service opportunities. And a lot of the clubs were doing projects for the Kwanis International projects, such as the KPTI, which is the Kwanis Pediatric Trauma Institute, which offers help to children who have been in traumatic experiences and accidents, and Camp Sunshine, which is a summer camp for children with cancer and their families. So, by seeing all these new opportunities, we could, like, collaborate with other clubs and see what their thoughts and ideas were about them, and try to bring them back to our own club. And so that was really cool. It also allows us to see that there are both global and local needs that we can attend to and help with. So, a lot of times, we had really been focusing on just local needs, but by going to this conference, we saw that there were also global needs that all of key club around the country participates in. In closing, I really enjoyed the convention because when you walked into the room with all the people there, you knew that you were all connected in this one special way, that you were all working towards a common goal of trying to make our communities a better place to live in.
Great, right. Thank you. Just so that, you know, we usually approve overnight field trips at the beginning of the year. We set that policy, but there was a change in leadership of the-
Sorry.
No, not your fault at all. I just wanna let everyone know. That's why it's coming to us now. There's a change in leadership, so we just need to be flexible and make sure that we keep doing all the great things that we've been doing.
Yeah. It sounds like a great experience.
What grade are you in?
Ten.
Well, you speak very well.
Thank you.
So Heidi, does the budget, did, does the budget change with the parking?
I'm just trying to. I, as far as the cost for the parking garage, I'm not sure what it is.
Last year, we all just chipped in for the parking, 'cause we just-
Okay.
It's in Springfield. I'm gonna guess that it's not, I don't think it was.
Not Boston prices, probably.
Right.
So, you all paid for it?
Yeah.
So I'm going to be driving. I have a permission slip that I've created for them, and it's the same that Mr. DiFranco uses for the athletic.
Okay.
So it, you know, has all the legalities listed on, on, if, if this is approved, they'll get the permission slips, and, you know, I will be driving them in, if, if that's what they want, and I think that's what they said they wanted.
So it's the three students and then you?
Yes.
I mean, generally, we wouldn't, we wouldn't suggest that an advisor drive children in their own car. We would prefer that they take transportation, but it doesn't really make sense to get a bus for this number. And we did check the legalities of it and the liabilities, 'cause of course, we don't wanna put Heidi, you know, in any personal liability should anything happen. And so we followed all of the appropriate procedures, so we would be good to go on that.
Alright.
I'm just curious, isn't the key club very large?
Yes.
And how do you choose which students attend? Is it the office?
The problem is that it costs a hundred and fifty dollars to go, and they're paying that out of their own pockets.
I see. Okay.
So that's why it's primarily the advisors that go.
Okay.
So it's not opened up to the whole? Oh, yeah, it, it is.
It is?
It is open up to everyone. When we have our meetings, we ask if people want to come, but I think it's a financial-
Sure.
-issue.
Right.
Sounds like a wonderful choice, chance to enjoy.
Thank you for sharing your experience with us. That was nice.
Yeah, it was very helpful.
Gives us a good, clear idea of what happens there.
And hopefully you can come back after and tell us how good it was. Great. Alright, so the chair wants to entertain a motion to approve New England District of Key Clubs Training Conference attendance as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Fun, enjoy.
Alright.
Yeah.
Are you guys, are you ready?
Can we do Donna's summer program?
Oh, okay. We're just gonna put-
'Cause I wanna make, let her go back to her building.
If it's okay with everyone, we're gonna move Donna ahead of the turf presentation because she has parent teacher conferences in her building right now.
They said she's gonna go clean out the driveway.
No, I don't think that's the plan.
So, so is that okay with everyone?
Oh, yeah, sure. These are just new copies.
Color copies?
Color copies. We use Publisher today, so we tried to make it a little-
Very nice, very nice.
I know, right?
Head for.
There you go.
So Donna, in the orange notes, I did explain to the committee how you've been running a program similar to this, and it's a little different this year because we're sort of going on two tracks.
Yep.
One is our district special education extended year programs, which Donna Straight will come and talk about on the fourteenth, and then Donna is running the sort of summer enrichment camp. So, so you have information, and this is really, Donna's just coming to, you know, if you have any particular questions, any, any further, need for further information. And I, I think we highlighted that it's kind of, it's, grade one is, has never had the opportunity to come to this camp. It's always been sort of integrated with the summer program at Pearly, but grade one will be able to come to this program.
Incoming grade one.
Incoming.
Usually, our biggest group is our incoming grade two, 'cause they get a chance to see the building, get a chance to explore, and they get to know faces. So parents see it as a great kinda segue into September, so.
Yes.
Do you usually sell out, or?
There's some that are, some of the, some of them are really popular. The Water is in the P, Pembroke CSI are very popular.
Oh, yeah, I've heard that.
So those are, and Mad for Science is always fun, 'cause they do some rockets. So what they added this year is, they tried a little bit last year, the field trips, but now they've added that people can come just to the field trip. So if you're a mom at home, looking for something to do on a Thursday with your kids, you know, you can do that field trip opportunity, just, so you don't have to go to camp. You can just go to the field trip.
Oh, that's a nice opportunity.
So I think one of them is Fenway Park, which is great, you know, a great chance to go in, and they get the bus.
Oh, they do like the tour, and-
Yeah.
That's neat.
What's nice is that they link the field trip with the theme of the week.
Yes.
So.
That's great.
That's very exciting. Roman Stone Zoo.
Science museum, so.
Does this get impacted by Triple E?
It didn't last year.
It didn't last year.
When did it hit, it comes in the fall, right?
It's more fall.
Yeah, that's right. It was right around-
Yeah.
Late August. I think it was like the first week that schools, that the sports opened, right?
Oh, so, yeah, so you're looking at August thirteenth, yeah.
So Donna, about how many kids could you take each session?
No, no, but it's-
Well, we believe that we have to take at least twenty-two.
With the possibility.
You know, that's our, kind of, our point. You know, if we get over twenty-two, twenty-three, we would have to hire more staff than we have budgeted now.
Okay.
So, you know, depending.
But it's a hundred percent self-sufficient.
Right.
Which we love.
So what if you don't get a minimum number?
Well, that's why we're gonna have to try and figure out. Sometimes, it's kinda like enrichment, sometimes you have lower numbers, but others, other weeks cover it. So we're hoping-
Okay, oh, I see what you're saying.
You have a, you'll have a pre-register, a pre-registration, so you have a little sense, maybe.
And it's pretty consistent for the most part. Last year, the only week that we had trouble was the Fourth of July week, which we knew, but, you know, that was the week we had actually planned on running it, so. And it's Virginia, and Mike, and Elizabeth.
And so, and you're not even doing Fourth of July week this year, so.
No, right. So they'd like to stay away from that.
Yeah.
When is this typically publicized?
Well, usually, it's a little later than this, so we're kind of ahead a little bit this year, but we wanted, the reason we wanted it done tonight, even though we had parent conferences, is because we wanted to get ahead of the other camps.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. Like, we've already signed up for camp, and the camps that, on the likes, are the ones that sell out so quickly, so I was, like, you know, waiting, waiting the day that email came, sign up.
Right, we do. We were just kinda, you know, so we're hoping to get this out, you know, Friday or Monday.
And, and, you know, we, if this becomes something that we run every year, then we can pay attention to getting it out earlier. It's just, you know, we don't have to come for the approval, 'cause it's pretty much an approved camp.
Right.
It's evolved over the years that I've been there. It's, you know, it's changed every year, so this is like another change, but we think this is gonna be really successful.
It's come a long way, yeah.
It really has, hasn't it?
Parents on the Health and Wellness Advisory Committee, or just who have health and wellness, you know, concerns, this food, glorious food, finding out where local food comes from, and visiting a local working farm. I mean, that all sounds terrific.
That's very popular, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alrighty. So the chair wants to entertain a motion to approve the Pembroke Adventure Camp for the summer 2013 as proposed, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Good luck.
Be careful driving back.
It's very exciting.
Do we have to do this?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Oh, she was moved.
Thank you. We have one other piece of that, which doesn't directly, doesn't directly involve Donna. We need to establish a revolving account to be called Pembroke Summer Camp, so we can collect the funds and put it where it belongs. So the chair wants to entertain a motion to establish a revolving account to be called Pembroke Summer Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alright. Okay, so was that all that we were moving around?
Yes.
Thank you. Now that we're sufficiently confused, do you guys wanna come up for the turf presentation?
Think everybody got a blue book?
Yes.
We did.
Hi, Jim?
I guess I'm covering for John. I'll just sit here and look.
Yeah, come on.
Yeah, John's on there.
I'm just gonna say, I-
I am a graduate of Georgetown High, so I just want you to know that before you ask me any, any hard questions.
I'm sure you're well, well prepared.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Perry. This is Jim Demento, and I'm on the GAA, I'm vice president of the GAA, and I'm also on Synthetic Turf Advisory Committee. Barbie's on there. Carol's a non-voting member. And on the front of your presentation is the people that are on that group. So that was an advisory committee that was recommended, put together by the selectmen. We'll be presenting to the selectmen on Monday night. Over the last two weeks, we've presented to the finance committee, and got a very, very favorable recommendation, and I think it was passed on to Anne from Sandra, right?
Yep.
And then, two nights ago, presented in front of the CPC, and I think the meeting went very well. There's a lot of information. There's a lot to cover. There's a lot to explain, a lot of pieces. And, but again, I think, you know, explaining the changes in, in the laws of SB ninety. So, we put together this book, and the first part of it is a mission statement, and I can, I can go through this pretty quickly. But the real, the history of where we're at and how we got here was around 2008, the town did a conservation recreation study. It's in here. And at that time, there was a requirement for thirty to fifty acres of active recreational space in Georgetown. And if you think of 2008, if you're, if you've been around the town, in 2008, we had no, in Georgetown, we had no flag football. Lacrosse was at a very, very starting stage. We didn't have all the heavy-duty All-Star baseball. We were probably, you know, at the time, on, on an average, two-hundred-and-fifty kids, two-hundred-and-seventy-five kids playing soccer. And here we are in 2013, and we have twenty-five flag football teams, you know, thirty-something soccer teams, softball, girls, all the way up. And all the sports have expanded. Babe Ruth, last year, we had six or seven teams, you know, fifteen or eighteen major league and minor league teams. So, all the programs have grown, and it's pretty common for us, in the fall, to have four-hundred-and-fifty kids playing soccer, two-hundred-and-fifty kids playing flag football. So there's quite large numbers. And from 2008 to 2013, what hasn't changed is field space. We've added none. But what has changed in that timeframe is GA, through a partnership, we work very, very closely with Carol and the schools, is we've maximized all the fields, and we've done all the maintenance, and we've, you know, investments. And there's a sheet in here, fifth chapter, and it gives you enough, kind of, an overview of what GA put into the sports program over two and a half or three years. We did a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars worth of investment, right? And then you get the labor that takes to keep all these fields. So the partnership is good, but what we're at on a constant basis is our fields are inadequate. We have scheduling issues, and, and we're overwhelmed. So in partnership with Park and Rec around 2008 timeframe, we went out to everybody in town that had over five acres of land, and, you know, would you be willing to sell the property to GA for?
Yeah, actually, every, every person with over twenty acres got a certified letter. So, we, even if we knew there was not a chance, and, you know, so, I mean, I just wanna let you know, this wasn't like, maybe this guy, maybe this guy. We notified everybody for certified letter.
So.
Everyone a fair chance.
Everybody had a, yeah, everybody a fair chance.
If you wanna sell the house, bring the house down.
Jump on that opportunity.
Right. So, just, go ahead.
So, so we approached everybody in town, and we got one taker, and that was a thirty-acre piece of property at the end of Stone Row. Gentleman was not able to, to develop, and it was a perfect situation for GA. We signed a letter of intent to purchase the property for six-hundred-and-fifty thousand. We would've donated it back to the town for a dollar. It had water, power, and all the engineering was done. It was just a once-in-a-lifetime deal, but it had one access in and one access out. And it's, to be fair to the neighbors, my, my street overlooks that street. They didn't want six-hundred kids every Saturday and coming up and down that road. It's difficult. So also, from that, and I put a copy, the town enacted a new, a new law here, whereas if you wanna create and take your property to active recreation, you need to go through a new process. Before, you could do it without going through that process. So what that tells us is development in this town for active recreation is gonna be very, very difficult moving forward. So that was the challenge. We, we weren't able to move forward. So, at that point, we, we again engaged in, in the town fields, and we started again looking at what the options are. There was no CPC matching capabilities at the time, because in the state, you couldn't use CPC money for renovation. And that's, that's what we were looking to do, was renovate a field. So we got with an engineering firm. There's a guy who was a baseball coach in town, civil engineering firm, and we did a review of the top field. And if, if you walk that road to get up there, you know, you know, one, it's a challenge to get up there. But two, to level the top field, there's a huge mound in the middle up there, and there's some photos in there that shows you all the athletic fields. But to level that field, what we didn't know before we did the engineering studies, is the field on the left and the field on the right are four feet in difference. They're not matched up. So to level that field and get all that out of there is about six-hundred thousand dollars, and that would be to grade, seed, sprinkler, so you'd have a, a complete surface up there. It's about a hundred-and-fifty thousand to get up there, because that road obviously would not allow for it. And then you'd need parking for about sixty to eighty cars. You'd have a gravel lot. So, six-hundred thousand to, to level it, a hundred-and-fifty to get up there, you know, sixty or seventy thousand. At the point, you still have no lights. You still have to pay for backstops.
No utilities.
No utilities, no restrooms. It's not ADA compliant, so there's a lot of issues. So that project for us was kind of, kind of put on hold. And also, so you understand, what's been going on in the background is, in 2009, we changed how GA was run. We decided at that point, we were going to charge an athletic fee that was comparable to other towns. We, so we did a survey for every single sport, soccer, basketball, everything. And at the time, we were anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred dollars difference. We were charging fifty dollars for every sport. So we upped our fees, you know, they're approximately seventy-five dollars. But what we, what we created was a capital account. So for every registration, any parent that puts a, a child in GA today, fifty dollars of that goes into a capital fund. And then we have a, an investment account, and then we have a checking account. So, you know, we're doing ongoing fifteen to twenty, twenty-five thousand, and each sport is doing a lot of fundraising. So that's how we're doing the maintenance, but we're building up a, a fund here. But also, we have kids that are seniors in high school now. Cole's family has, has put their money into the pile. They're not getting anything back for it. So people are asking us, other than the maintenance of the fields, where are you at? So, we now have approximately four-hundred thousand dollars in, in a, in a capital account. So we have a real good track record of saving money, and we have a real good record of how we're gonna get there. So, we, we kinda followed the state legislature. We were told about eighteen months out that SB ninety had a real potential, and then we got ahold of some state legislatures. Carol helped us. We did a lot of checking, but communities like Medford, Everett, they don't have Lufkin Brook-type projects and the rest of it, and they had, you know, the CPC money, but they had all these MDC parks that were in dire need of being fixed, recreation. So really, those type of communities pushed this project through, pushed the law through. So it came into law, and now CPC can obviously use money for infrastructure, construction, the rest of it. They cannot pay for the synthetic turf. That's the only thing. We had it checked with town council. So, once that green light went on, we really, really stepped on the gas. And we've had engineering studies. CPC gave us ten thousand dollars. We did test pits. There's pictures there on the lower field. And the reason we felt this was our best location, you know, it has parking facilities, you can put lights there without affecting any neighbors, you can play football, lacrosse, soccer, softball, flag football, baseball. It's, it's really a community location. It's a great location. So, again, continuing to work with the schools, we went out, we hired a company called Gale Associates. They were the company that did the engineering and bid for the Taking Pride in Georgetown project about four years ago, which would've been about a four-and-a-half million-dollar project on the top field. That would've had been bonded, and it would've had to go to the town. It would've been, you know, money for the taxpayers. And that was a project, from GA standpoint, we weren't in favor of, because we didn't feel that the town should be paying for the athletic fields. You know, a third of the town will use a project. We just didn't feel it should go onto the tax rate.
One other point, and this is just general numbers. CPC can flow to bond for fifteen years max. We can't flow to bond for matching funds. So we're limited to basically bond about a hundred thousand dollars a year. So, without money, and I'd say, we have, I'm gonna need three-hundred thousand until now. We can only take the three-hundred thousand and then flow to bond for fifteen years, which would be one-point-five million approximately. So- So we could not bond a four million dollar project, even if we wanted to.
Right.
So, you know, so people thinking, oh, we just bonded through CPC, that's not available. We have a certain limit at which we can help on a project.
Okay.
So, so the options.
Mark, just for those of you who don't know, Jim, Jim is Director Park and Rec.
Right.
And he's also on the CPC. So he's got a lot of involvement on this. And he's vice president or vice chair of this committee with Mark and John.
So when we, when we went to CPC, we, we brought a quote, it's about a two million dollar project that's soup to nuts. It's a complete, there's a photo in there, that's seating for five hundred, that's lighting, that's all the, uh, maintenance, the lining of the field, retaining walls, bleachers, dugouts for baseball. It's perfect, beautiful. Um, so we also understand there's restrictions, right? There's, there's, there's issues going forward. So we're, we're looking at a couple, a couple of options on the field itself. But what G A is committed to do is we've committed to pay for the field turf, which is five hundred thousand dollars. One of the big problems with the original project was you have to replace this turf. Originally, four or five years ago, it was around a ten or twelve year lifetime. It's a fifteen-year lifetime right now. But because we have the funding mechanism in place and we have the capabilities, G A is also going to commit that we'll put an escrow account in place and we'll put the money aside on a yearly basis to replace this carpet in fifteen years. So that, that part of it, we, you know, we can answer that question.
That was a question I had, yes.
It's a big part of it. And, and obviously, because we don't, you don't want something that the town is going to get, going to get stuck with down the road.
And I was thinking fifteen years, yes.
Fifteen years. So we can easily, um, accumulate the money to replace it. So you're starting with a million dollar donation. You're starting in a situation where you have a great partnership already established between the schools and the G A. And let's face it, it's all the same kids, okay? But you're also starting in a situation, and as part of our recommendation, recommendation for the lower field, I put, um, a field utilization study in there. So you'll see on that spreadsheet, every field, every team, every day, every month, on a yearly basis. But you'll get a sense if, if we, if we go to town meeting in May and we vote, you know, just say we start the project a year from May. It's about four months, once you put the shovel in the ground. But it's going to take us six months or so to go through the permitting and all the rest of it. But if you start in a, in a September season, how the school runs now, football is up on the top left field every day, varsity and JV football. They run that field to, to mud, okay? Five days a week, it's, it's useless, it's gone. So that team comes down below.
It's a safety issue too.
Right, so they're down, they're down practicing on the turf. At five-thirty or six o'clock, Monday through Friday, flag football is on Penn Brook. They run that dirt, that, that field to dirt. So they come over, they're under the lights. Friday nights, our football games are at home. Flag football, if you go to North Andover on a Friday night, they have flag football before and they have it at halftime. They bring four or five hundred, families just go and they go and support the high school, it's a great atmosphere. So Saturday morning now, clinic in the fall is either on Penn Brook or it's out in the outfield at the varsity baseball. Soccer clinic comes on. So again, we have no football at home on Saturdays. G A comes off of West Street, we only have two fields at West Street. So they come down all day, you play a game every hour and a half from seven o'clock, eight o'clock in the morning till nine o'clock at night. The relief from West Street will be huge, okay? And Sunday, you'll have a similar relief. And it'll go like this throughout the season. So you'll play your high school soccer games on this field. Now what happens, um, high school soccer, two o'clock in the afternoon, high school field's underwater, it's unplayable, can't have a game, they call G A. So at two o'clock in the afternoon, between two and two-thirty, it's a full-time job, you've got to get ahold of between four and six teams, G A, that are going to practice in West Street Tuesday afternoon or Wednesday. They're off. So the high school takes that, they takes that field. So we're going to have a, a change, because you'll be able to schedule, if you're the athletic director, you're a team, you're a parent. If you have a game at two o'clock in Georgetown on a Tuesday, you're going to play. Now, you don't know, you have no idea. All the home games are going to play here. Right now, our football games are being played all over the place because of the, the field. So it takes a big relief. It allows us to use the field, you know, pretty consistently all the way till the end of November, all the way through. And then in the spring, right now, for example, most high schools that have a synthetic turf field are outside. They clean it and the baseball teams, the lacrosse teams, they're getting evaluated, they're doing tryouts. Our teams are an hour at a time in the gym, beating the crap out of the gym, hitting baseballs and throwing lacrosse balls all around the gym. So again, in the spring, what will happen is youth lacrosse will be on there at night. They're up top now, they're over Penn Brook, they'll come down and use this field. So the ability to, to use some of our time from these other fields, we'll be able to rest some fields, the consistency. And again, the overall situation, graduation, we talked about this the other night, where else will save money? For example, you know, the school department has labor for two days or three days to set up for graduation. All the chairs, everything else, it rains, everybody goes in the gym, goes back and forth. I mean, I graduated on that football field. I mean, today, you'd never schedule, schedule a graduation. But all you do is you set up the chairs for the kids. Parents would sit in the stands, you graduate, you'd have band concerts, you'd have community events. Um, and then right now, in, in, in a, in a, in a period of eighteen months in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, there's ninety of these fields going in. Westford's doing three, Burlington's doing four or five, Newburyport's doing one, Triton's doing one, Manchester's done two, North Andover's done two. I mean, Masco's doing one. They're going in because it's five fields to one.
Right.
That's, that's, I put a, a study in there as well in your package. So that's the difference. A real field that we have at the high school should be about thirty-five thousand dollars a year in maintenance for the varsity field. We're not spending thirty-five thousand dollars a year, it's just not happening. So I, I don't think you could actually spend thirty-five thousand on that field. But the last couple of years, um, the maintenance department has been doing the air rating and we put six thousand or eight thousand dollars worth of sand on that field. We still weren't able to play some of the games there.
Yeah.
Um, so it's, it's a great project. Um, we've got the finance committee is, is favorable. Um, we, we feel that the, the CPC is, is really coming along and we're hoping they recommend us. All we're asking for is that the school committee gets behind us, is that we go to the town in May. And we put it up and we'll do a couple of information nights, you know, and we'll get the, up to the high school and people can come down and throw the questions out, give us whatever they want. We really would like the town to vote on this. Because one, the school's never going to get this opportunity again. Two, the town's never getting it again. And three, we have a, a dramatic situation in this town right now. And, you know, I, I read the paper tonight, your athletic fees are going up. This town's not buying any land, it's just not, just not going to happen. And the reality is, we can't take care of the facilities that we have now. So we have, we have maintenance shortages, we have other, other issues. So turf is really, really the way to go. And we've met with conservation, we've met with planning, uh, Steve Pizemski has, has looked at everything. And these projects are going, you should see the one in Reading, uh, Manchester, I mean, it's in between a golf course and a river. So Gale, the engineering firm, feels, and they said they feel they can demonstrate that not only will this project be cost-effective for the town, it'll be environmentally be a major improvement for this town. Because you control water flow. It's, you know, the water goes into it, but it's, it's got a drainage system. So there's a lot of benefits from that as well. Couple of questions that we've been getting asked is how do you clean the field, right? So there's a machine that's part of the, part of the package, goes on the back of, of a tractor.
Which we have.
Right, you hook a hose into it, it's, it's a twenty-five-hundred-dollar machine and the field gets, gets dragged.
When you say it's part of the package, what do you mean?
It's part of the total bond, you know, total bond package. It's, it's, yeah, it's included in the price.
Twenty-five-hundred dollars is included in the total.
Right, it's, we've got new scoreboard here, we've got stands for five hundred, we've got lighting. Um, you know, it's a, it's, if you look at the itemized bill there, it's, it's quite substantial.
Now, Mark, how often does it get cleaned?
Well, it's interesting because I asked the people from Weston High School and, um, they've had their turf three years and they haven't cleaned it yet. Uh, because the, when you get more than three inches of rain in, in the course of a year, um, and I actually was up at Phillips'.
You might be able to do better than that.
Uh, I was at Phillips', Academy, Andover.
I think it's a good idea to do one a year.
Two weeks ago at a hockey game and I went out and I asked the maintenance department, how often are you cleaning this field?
So they have one.
So we're not doing it. Um, we, you know, once you go over three inches of rain, it, the field's taking a, taking a shower.
Although I do know in Texas, I was reading articles, they do it in Texas because it's hot.
Yeah, yeah, they have, they could have three or four months with no.
Part of the season helps us.
With no, with no rain. But again, it's, it's, uh, it's not difficult to do.
I mean, there is some maintenance, but it's a lot less.
Yeah, no, there isn't. I mean, the reality is this driving this, if you took what the ma, what the hi, uh, the high school department does during football season, football and lacrosse season, in lining fields alone, it's probably twenty or twenty-five hours a week.
Right, right.
And manpower, these are permanently lined, it's done.
Right.
And this field has a, a removable baseball mound. So there's no dirt, there's no dirt in the batter's box. And we went and looked at Dartmouth and Providence College baseball fields and, you know, Anne knows, my son's played on a ton of these fields. But they have a, they have a mound now, you drag it off. So we can use that area to practice for football, flag football, lacrosse. So we'll use the whole surface all the time.
Yeah.
So I think it's, um, like I said, I, the, the SB ninety coming in, in, within, you know, the last six or eight months has changed everything for us.
What about injuries to the athletes?
Well, we have some parents here, it's, it's actually one of the big problems, and I, I was not so aware of this. Um, my son is not playing, uh, at Georgetown, so I, I'm not aware of it. We have a huge injury issue right now. And I, I think Dan could speak on that, his son is, he's part of Georgetown football. But let me speak on this, it's, it's written in here as well. Um, the occurrence of injury, tw, uh, ankles, knees, is substantially, and they have some numbers here, significantly less than a perfectly well-maintained, groomed and grassed field. We don't have a perfectly maintained, groomed and grassed field.
Where, where, I'm just curious.
I have some studies. Let's just, yeah, just one second, do, let me have him speak and then I'll have you go back.
Just curious, where, where does that information come from?
Um, they track it. Uh, I think they're probably track, you know, it's like, uh, uh, probably synthetic turf.
Uh.
Actually, I, I have some studies here from Texas A and U and Montana State University that, uh, say there's twenty-six to ten percent fewer severe injuries, forty-four to twelve percent fewer concussions, thirty-three to forty percent fewer lower ACL trauma, and thirty-three to thirty-one percent fewer ligament tears. Right, these, these.
Okay, you want to, let's let Dan, let me just let Dan go.
So just to put it in perspective, Georgetown football had more knee injuries than they did head injuries in the last two years. Half of the knee injuries are, almost half occurred just on the practice field. Last year because of.
Practice field is the upper field.
The upper field.
Okay.
Last year because of, between mosquitoes and weather and everything else, they played two home games. And the two home games, there were four knee injuries. Now, why am I here speaking? My son actually saw it a lot. You know, and here it is, two and a half months, three months afterwards, he still has the same injury. I mean, he's going through it, he'll be fine. You look at what happened to, to Tommy Coy during the game against North Reading, field was wet. We were down there for literally, I spent four hours down there trying to get that field playable, working with the maintenance crew from the high school. Twenty-something bags of turfers. Tommy Coy stepped, his foot went down six inches into the mud, tore his ACL, tore his MCL. You know, and it's the, what, what we talked about the night at CPC is, all the other reasons are great reasons, right? Pride in town. You don't hear other teams men say, I can't believe we're playing in this pit, which is hurt. You don't have the coaches from Manchester Essex as an example walk in and say, I'm not playing the Thanksgiving Day game here. We have to move it to Manchester Essex. Those are all wonderful things, but for me, the safety of the student athletes is what comes first. And while I've talked about football, as Mark knows, I've been in Babe Ruth program for almost four years coaching. Countless hours spent just on that JV field alone, and the JV football team and a baseball team last year. It, you get anything above a half inch of water, that entire field is underwater, you can't play. I paid three hundred and fifty dollars, I think it was last year, for my son to play baseball. Three home games got canceled, JV games don't get rescheduled. You know, and the liability, at, at some point, we don't do something. I, I can see someone coming after the town because it's no problem now.
I have people, I had a, a ref last year at West Street. Not even one of our, I, probably in the middle grade field says, we're not going to have, I'm not, I'm going to talk to the refs, we're not going to have any more soccer games in this field unless you make improvements. My reply to, to the ref was, you should do it because the town won't do anything unless you kick us off these fields. I mean, we do have a, we have a major problem with the fields and this is just solving, this is allowing us to address the other fields to make them passable. And you know the upper fields, that, they're, they're, they're in dire need of help. And hopefully, after we put this field in, we'll be able to address those and hopefully, after this bond is paid off, start addressing those fields as well. I mean, we have a number of different places in town that we need to improve the recreational areas.
I know, I don't, it, there's no question, the turf field versus what we've got now is a huge improvement, no question at all. And as far as injuries are concerned, no question, it's a huge improvement over what we have now. I guess I just want to, uh, remind everyone or caution everyone that there are also some very reputable studies, um, that show artificial turf, um, when you compare it to artificial turf and good fields, actually with knee injuries in particular, um, increase. Um, so I just, I want to be, I just want to caution people saying that it's a huge improvement across the board with injuries.
But that's artificial, not synthetic. The turf applied surface has changed dramatically in the last three to four years.
Right.
And you, yeah, you play, when you played on artificial turf, okay? I've played actually, I, I played college sports on artificial turf, we also played basketball on it. Um, because it was a cement base under, uh, a, a tar, a tarp and, and a burning material. The synthetic turf, and you saw the study, you can Google, there's fifty different articles that pop up. When you're, when you're replacing in NFL stadiums, they're not replacing because the cost of sod is too expensive. They're replacing because the cost of athletes is too expensive. And knee and ankle are the number one issues in the NFL and they're putting synthetic turf in. Because the, the change in this material now.
The crumbs.
The crumbs and the rubber that's in it, it's, it, like I said, the lifetime, since we started this project in two thousand eight to now, it's gone up four years, the, the lifetime because of the capability and the durability and the flexibility of the product.
I guess what I just want to say again is, um, there's no question, the turf is a huge improvement over what we have.
Yeah.
And I think that's a, it's a great idea and I support that, make no mistake about that. I just want to caution this throwing out of statistically, that on the new fields, they're a huge improvement, uh, injury-wise. Because in fact, um, if you, uh, do research with, uh, U Penn, um, who is one of the top authorities with this, you will find, uh, two thousand and twelve studies, two thousand and eleven studies that will indicate this. So there's information on both sides for the injury issue, that's the only point I'm trying to make.
No, no, I, I agree. As a matter of fact, I, I looked at that and they have a New York City study as well. Um, one of the other things that come up is the crumb material. For instance, the rubber, which is the low-end crumb, has a higher shock value for a longer period of time than what they consider the more expensive Viton crumb rubber. So there is a lot of information out there, a lot of it's new. I think that if you should all, at some point, when you get a cup of coffee and want to goof off at home, spend some time, but make sure you're reading two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve reports. Because if you're reading two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, you're wasting your time.
And I would caution, you need to find out who the reports are coming from.
That's correct, right.
Because there's, there are certain groups that are legitimate, independent, and then there are others that have agendas under it.
Yes.
Yeah. So I think that, you know, there's, there's a lot of information in, in this packet. But, um, you know, we're, we're really on, we're really on target. And our goal, like I said, is, uh, if we get the vote or approval from CPC, it would be nice to be able to say, CPC, our, our school committee is, is with us, um, FinCom is with us, Selectmen is with us, let's, let's go to the town.
One other possibility is, in the course, we haven't really talked about is the summer. We can run clinics, we might be able to run the summer program for the kids with the G A, uh, the Park and Rec, because we'll have a good surface. Um, so there's some money-making opportunities, maybe a men's league, baseball at night. Um, because you're going to, we're going to want to bring in revenue.
Any tournaments, yeah.
Tournaments.
Mm-hmm.
And those are all, those will all be options. So we're going to try, truthfully, the fields, the best deal to make the field is maximize its use.
And the question about money for maintenance, money for, you know, affording the utilities, that can come from, you know, an, an account that we, we put together that basically we get the income for and we can channel it back.
It also sounds like this would reduce our transportation costs. I mean, if we're constantly having games at, in other school districts.
The home field, when you, when you have to move a football game, you lose, you know, a few thousand dollars and you got to bus them and, and when you have to, you know, think of all the home soccer games, I think last year there was eight or nine played at West Street. And you're busting, you got to bust these kids up there, right? To West Street, you know. To West Street, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's a very uh.
Transportation. Very high and they're. All the time.
Who, who, who pays for the maintenance of the field?
Well, that's kind of the skin in the game we put in. So we, we have a donation for the turf and a replacement cost from G A A. The CPC and ultimately the town, they're, they have an investment through a, through a bond and through the CPC money that. Uh, isn't new mu- new tax dollars for people, but it's still money from their tax dollars that's set aside. That's a huge investment for.
It's not an increase in their taxes.
But it's a huge.
It's money, it's tax money that's been put aside for these.
So what we've said is that it would be our responsibility, working in coordination here with, to maintain it. So we have, so we have a grounds person, which we, we talked about that, the redirection of the way we're doing our, our buildings and grounds. So we have a grounds person that would be dedicated to this, plus another halftime person that could be brought into the process. We have the tractor, we have the, you know, the new equipment that was bought with the C I. C I P funds and then we would save money, well, we have to still spend some money, cause we, our goal would be. To work on, in, in coordination with G A A and others to, to slowly deal with these other fields.
But when it comes just for the turf expense, like just for the maintenance expense for the.
Yeah, you, you would, you would hook the tractor up on a yearly basis, seasonal.
Would that fall under our budget?
Well, we'd have to discuss that, right? So if we have, if we end up with a revolving account that, you know, some rental money comes in. You know, that could be something we would do, but we would have to identify funds. Right now, we spend a lot of money on field paint, we spend a lot of money on turf. Because we're constantly trying to.
But so the money we need to maintain the field would come from the money we're not spending on the lines.
And, you know, we may, depending on the circumstances, we may need, cause we would wanna set money aside for chemicals and.
It's really short money.
But we anticipate it being short money in comparison.
Like Mark said, one tenth.
The big money, if you really wanna talk about the big money, it's gonna be the electricity for the lights. And that runs about a hundred, and I've sent that to you, that's about a hundred dollars an event. So if you have a two-hour, two-and-a-half-hour football game at night, out of the two thousand dollars you collect in from, from the gate. It's about a hundred dollars worth of light. It isn't a thousand, it isn't five hundred. We've actually, I've sent some, some information on that around, so it isn't unbearable.
It's a lot less than transportation.
Right, and we're talking about, I mean, we're talking, here it says maintenance cost are about one-fifth the cost of maintaining a natural grass surface.
Right.
We would have to identify funds and a funding source for it. Because the last thing we would wanna do would, would be to get a lovely facility.
But that's assuming that we don't have any funds that were you, but.
Right, I mean, you cut the grass there on a weekly basis. Cut, it takes four and a half to five hours to cut the grass. You can, and, and that's every single week. It takes two to three hours to line the field with two people. That's two to three times a week, okay? So now, no more lining. No more cutting the grass. Once a season, you hook the tractor up, put the hose on it and you, and you wash, you drag the field.
I would imagine also after every game, somebody has to go out there and sweep up any kinda trash and debris.
Now, you have to pick up the trash in the field now.
We don't have as many games though, right? So we'll be doing that more often.
Well, I think maybe the games are at other fields, it's not that we.
Typically, you want the synthetic field to be more restricted to people walking on it.
There is, there is fencing here, it'd be gated, um, the school, the athletic would, would control access. I mean, you don't want Sunday people down there with their dogs running around on it and, and all the rest of it, but. The, the unique thing is once this field goes in, there's not gonna be any time for someone to put their dog out there unless they wanna be in the dark. Because it is going to be jammed.
This was a very comprehensive report. I was really impressed with the. I mean, it's clear to me, there's some very dedicated people in town who've been working on this for a long time and trying to be very thorough.
The most important thing you should know is, none of us have kids. I mean, we started this, I started the park and rec fifteen years ago.
No, I have kids.
No, we, none of us have kids, they're gonna benefit from this. Neither John Pingery or, or Mark or I have kids, our kids, so we're not doing this like, oh, I want my kid to play football, he's long gone. This is really a good idea for the town, because, I mean, and we've been, we thought, when we got started in these different organizations. We'd be here talking in nineteen ninety-five. Well, it's not nineteen ninety-five anymore. Just to put that, just to put that arrest.
If I could raise enough money, it would be, it, to me, it would, and again, had this discussion. It would be Coach Jim Callmore Field. He spent more time on that field than anybody in the history of this town. Hundreds of thousands of hours on that field. And if I could find the money to, to do it, I'd do it.
And, and, and he was my coach as well, and the one thing you have to remember, he taught a football program by himself. He, he handled the line. He handled the backs, pretty much, and I tell you, those kids were pretty tough back then. I mean, he really did, and he, he really did a great job with what he had.
Something we, we, as a town, we, we could put naming rights out to bid, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm working on.
Policy that says, don't do that.
Yeah, I know you don't. Yeah, you, you had a policy, you weren't gonna put signs up at high school fields and you know.
I know, we changed that.
World's changed.
I didn't say policy could be changed.
There is the opportunity for like, there is opportunity on the sidewalks to put bricks, you know. Donation from the, donation from the. I know, Westford is doing, Westford does a little bit of that, um, so they have little, along the wall, they have little.
I think it's the adult camps, I mean, the adult leagues, a summer program. You know, you can generate some, you can generate some money off of this.
Now, where would that money go?
Well, you'd have to set, yeah, you have to set up an account and, and.
And it would be used for whatever that field needed.
Well, I think we, we should, we should all talk about that.
That's gonna be something that, yeah, needs.
Does it go to the field, does it go towards another field?
The idea of the fifteen-year replacement, the Selectmen have already talked to the G A A about getting together. To work out, hash out the legal agreements that would have to be put in place for that to happen. So it isn't something that people have forgotten about, that they're an entity that.
And we talked about this with the savings bank and how to set this up. I mean, be, just how far this has gone, before this, the, the SB ninety. John Pingery, who's watching on TV, is home on the couch right now, we went down and talked to savings bank about getting a loan. Because, you know, how can G A get a loan? We'd have to put our houses up. Um, because of, of, you know, who we are as an organization. Um, so that, like I said, the CPC coming along at this time is, is, is really something. It's really, it's really a good potential.
I think Rob had a couple of questions.
When I looked at the plan, it looked like the fields were knocking out a couple of parking spaces. Did you have a chance to look at that?
Yeah, that's the turf into the right corner. We don't have to go into the parking lot. Right now, the baseball field is approximately twenty to twenty-five feet shorter than, than this, this is drawn out. We're gonna go deeper into the hill and there's gonna be some movement as, as you, as you kind of adjust right now. But right now, um, our right fielder plays in front of the field goalposts, so the balls are not going. And there's a couple of things, Jim was big on this. Is what, there's things that, yeah, size, you know, three fifty is an official field, we're gonna be at three twenty.
I'd like to, I, I'd like to.
Compared to what we're doing, we're, we're playing there. We've played baseball on that field since nineteen seventy-six. You know, it's most, and fifty percent of the games have been canceled since nineteen seventy-six. So we're gonna go another twenty, twenty feet out, uh, we're gonna have a, a temporary fence that's out there. And this, things also changed. Last year in baseball, high school baseball, BB Corp bats came into play. The fields were official at three fifty. So now, because the speed of the ball hitting the bat was, you know, a lot of injuries were happening, pitchers or whatever. They put these BB Corp bats, the balls are not flying quite as far. But um, it, it, it will be a tremendous, tremendous improvement.
I'd like to be able to leave that open as a point of negotiation event, if we have to take parking. In that corner, that we would replace it somewhere else and, on that property. Because I, we may decide that, you know, it would be nice instead of having the right field three ten to three twenty. And if we lose a couple parking spaces to do that, we'll find a place to put those parking spaces on, on the school property. That's illegal, I mean, because it would.
Spaces are precious.
There's no doubt, and there is a place up by High Street, if you know, there's a, there's a berm up there that you could actually put additional parking.
The proximity issue would have to be looked.
We, we will, we will, if, if I have to go up there with a shovel, we'll find a place to put it. No, I mean, and we will probably, and then worse, with, with my, my original layout, we would lose three or four parking spaces, but that isn't a huge area that we couldn't find. And, and I'll work with Peter Durk if we had, I'm not saying that's gonna be what ultimately happens, but. There is some negotiating, my original concern was, I, and we thought that center field was too short. It's one thing to have a JV practice field, but theoretically with this turf field, you wanna have a, a JV game field. You wanna game, a field that people are gonna go on and say, this is a game field, not, not a practice field. So we are working those issues out.
And you could, but varsity could go there as well.
I mean, I, I went, when Jim came up with all the markings, I went out to five uh, fields here. Uh, Rockport starts at two, two sixty-five to two eighty-five in the, in right field, they have a, they have a hill. There's all different sizes. Very few, very few schools, towns have exactly the three forty, but you could play varsity games here, very, very easily. Our var- you know, the, the shining light in all of our athletic fields is the varsity field. But G A A puts fifteen thousand dollars a year into that field. And we've put over sixty-five or seventy thousand dollars into that field. It's been all new turf, dugouts, all new mounds, all new sprinklers.
You guys have, have put, what, four years and more into this and a ton of work.
Started six years ago.
So before I get to Trestle Way, we gotta get a turf uh, field here. Sandy gravel first, that's my next stop, then Trestle Way.
I, I, I wanna, I, I wanna acknowledge that, um, because of the amount of work you guys have done. Um, so bear with me when I ask some of these questions, because I'm trying to catch up. I wasn't part of that four years. Um, the logical, one question that comes up for me is, um, was there any consideration, I'm sure there was. For just doing a, a football, soccer, lacrosse field and not the, um.
We talked about that. It's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings, two light poles is not much savings in turf. Um, but the, the, because of the hill, all the drainage has to be done anyways. But the issue is going back, we have two full-size baseball fields in this town. One of them is there. To move a full-size baseball field up to the top. Okay, you gotta remove the, the middle, remember, six hundred thousand, hundred and fifty to get up, parking, no lights.
So your net half a million.
Why, why no lights?
Cause you can't put them up there, for, for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you can't go up top, is what I'm saying. And also, you have neighbors up top.
I didn't know if that was a new approval process issue.
No, it's just the fact that you, you're gonna run into issues up there, you have, you have six or seven houses that border the property up there. Um, but that's the main thing, it's the cost to get up there. And again, think of this, it's, it's only a baseball field four months of the year. That mound comes out, football team's gonna practice there. If you didn't, you'd have a swamp leading up to a turf field, because that's, that's literally what that area.
Yeah, you know, one, one thing that sold me was the, it's not a, it's, it's where the little kids will play, six-year-olds can play there. Eight-year-olds can play there, it's a base, it's almost a baseball, that area is almost a baseball field for them. Yeah, you have to support a few bases, but it's much better than having them play down the bandstand at American Legion, cause that becomes a dirt pit as well. So you got that area and you might even be able, with the little kids, you might even be able to get two games if you get them in the right corners.
Yeah, you'll play soft, you'll, you'll play girl softball there. I mean, you, cause you'll have a backstop and, and, yeah, and dugouts.
I, I, I guess, um.
My goal is to try and, and we've been working, trying to make it to a standard field, so what it. So St. John's Prep could say, hey, look, we got a, we got a championship game, can we get time, can we buy, rent your field or something? Or, or in the summer leagues, men's league says, we wanna, we, we got a baseball team, a real serious baseball team, Babe Ruth, you wanna come down and use your field? We can say, yeah, our field's the standard, and we're working those issues, you know? And like I said, we might be a little short on center field, but, I mean, center field is not the issue, the issue is like, from the, from the home plate. The backstop, first, second, third. I mean, you can always cut a little bit out of center field and right field. I agree that if you're around over three hundred. You know, we have some, you know, that's, that's the least of the issues.
So, I, 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 again, I guess, um, trying to catch up to all of the time you guys have done. The question that's going around in the back of my head is, um, you know. Fifteen, twenty, thirty years down the road. And it's the long-term question that's in my head and it's for children who aren't even part of the town yet. And my cons- the question that's going around in my head is, um. While there's no disagreement that a turf field is needed. Um, it seems like there's a lot that's trying to get pushed into this one location. And it, I, I can't help but wonder if, you know, some of it was done. Here and the long-term plan was to address the top and do it right. That, that, that's, it reminds me a little bit of. This, the, um, when the town had the issue uh, with the sewer in Groveland. And it was a, it was a, it was a money issue and it was an immediate need. Um, and they chose not to uh, tie into the sewer system. Well. At that point in time, it was the right thing for them to do. Um, and I'm sure at this point in time, you guys have studied this a lot more than I have, it's probably the right thing to do for this point in time. But for the future, for thirty, forty years from now. You know, today downtown, because of that decision. Uh, it's business, we're, we're, we're a town that generates taxes off property and there's no commercial base. And that decision long-term has had negative effects over and over and over again and. And that's what I, that's just where I'm, I'm wondering with that, with this.
I, I can address a couple of things. The, the current status of our fields in this town is a negative impact on this town financially right now, dramatic. Okay, I told the story the other night. I moved three guys from the west coast here, they work for me. They came here two years ago on Thanksgiving, I took them to a Thanksgiving Day football game. All three families went to that football field and toured our schools. None of them bought a house in this town. They went to Hamilton and Manchester. They bought houses that were half the size of what they could buy in this town, because our facilities are deplorable. So that's, that's a huge economic issue for us right now. One, because families choose towns based on schools and facilities. Right? And every, every town that's circling us, Ipswich, Triton, Newburyport, they've addressed their facilities at their schools. Secondly, thirty years down the line, let's go back to two thousand and eight, we did a recreation study. That's the third recreation study this town has done. We have not added any recreational land. Okay, so we're not adding land. And then ultimately, getting to the top field. Right, we're struggling getting a bond in this town on CPC for a million dollars, a million two. We went up top for four million, it got shot down. We don't have the money. Soundly, yeah.
Can I ask you one other thing too?
I, I, I think that, um, uh, what you say, I mean, what you say makes sense, um. Uh, an, an example of people buying into a town, um, in the sports and, and that sort of thing. With, one scenario, and this is, you know, I'm putting it out here in terms of how I'm thinking about this. One scenario is, there's, you come into the school. And you arrive and your front door and your first experience is the fields that you were talking about. You're going to have about four hundred or something, four hundred plus lineal feet of retaining wall. You're going to have basically a large, um, mat of green covering the entire surface. Um, and possibly be dealing with parking and that sort of thing. Versus having one large rectangular space, which is for the soccer and lacrosse and football. And a grandstand that is truly ceremonial for a school. That has graduations at it, you know, not these move of, removable things and things that you move around. But you come in to arrive at Georgetown High School and there's this beautiful facility on the right with this beautiful set of grandstands. And up top is being worked on, um, as part of the big picture. That opportunity will, will be lost, once these fields go in.
I, I don't, I don't know that they'd be lost, Rob, I think that it's part of the grant plan, right? So what Jim is saying too is that the, the CPC, cause this is one of the things I talked about the other night was. Um, what other funds, like, like the C I P funds, how could the C I P funds be used? To upgrade a field or two at a time, over time. So, so the goal is to get the big plan, right? And then to look at it in phases, so.
What I mean by being lost is not that, cause I heard that and I think that's great, the phase is down the road. But I, what would be lost would be the opportunity for your first impression of Georgetown High School.
It wouldn't be lost, it would be delayed.
But I, I think the, I think the view of looking here to the right. I, I, again, I think one, one major thing has to be understood. G A A's given a million dollars. We're given a million dollars to play. We're given a million dollars to play under the lights. And we're not given a million dollars for grandstands. We're gonna have stands. We're gonna have stands, it's gonna look good, this project will look so impressive. Take, I mean, you you literally have to walk these projects. We've seen a hundred of them, they look beautiful. You're gonna have your big blue G in the middle of the field, you're gonna have seating for three to four hundred people on the right. You're not gonna have any mud, you're not gonna have holes, water. You know, it's just, it's all gonna be clean enough, you're gonna have a beautiful retaining line, nice, nice lines, an actual backstop that fits and it's gonna be fenced beautifully. But I I just, I think honestly, people, people gotta get past the the dream. Okay, the dream of doing up top and, you know, I've, I have been to a hundred meetings, easy. To try to get to a point where we actually can play on a field. Really do it. And we can't go up top, we don't have the money.
The other thing that I.
That resonates for me more than.
I'm gonna go with your dream, cause I I had a similar, the similar concept. But my dream goes out fifteen years from now.
Mine's more of a thought.
Alright, but my, right, my thoughts fifteen years from now. Fifteen years from now, if we have done the improvements in town to get other pieces of land and they have a second baseball field or a third up there. Then we say, okay, we don't need to put the baseball down, then when they put the new synthetic turf. They take out the infield and they put a grandstand if you, if the school committee wants it. And this G A A pays less money to do that because they say, we're happy, we got five other baseball fields in town now.
Jimmy, you'll be at Union Cemetery and that baseball field will still be in that body.
What I'm saying, if that, if that, if that happened, but right now, we're really stuck on getting enough areas to play. And if we had five or six additional places, we wouldn't be like possibly cramming it, I don't think, we're trying to work as best we can not to.
I have just one other thing that I'm kinda thinking of, as we're going through this funding, so we have like five hundred thousand dollars. Um or four hundred thousand dollars in the capital account. I'm guessing that that's come from the G, the fees that we pay for all the sports, from all the sports. So, and I'm not, I will acknowledge that I have three kids that have played baseball. So, so if I'm a parent that's been paying into G A A and I have this great field but it's missing the one sport that my kids play.
And you can't practice football down there, because we don't got enough space.
Right, so I'm I'm sitting here thinking.
Five soccer practices there on a Saturday, you can't have four lacrosse teams down there. We're at such a, we are such dire need that you're not just gonna have a soccer, a soccer game going on out there. You're gonna have a soccer game, you're gonna have something going on beside. You're gonna have three flag football games going back to forth. You won't be able, like I said, there won't be any doggy walk time down here from when school gets out.
Is there gonna be parking for all the people that?
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna use the high school park.
The dog park has to be a different project.
From when the school bell rings, till we shut those lights off. Five days a week and all day Saturday and Sunday.
West Street, we used to stagger the games a half hour. Group gets off, gets out, another, a half hour delay, another group that's in there, we can't even do that anymore.
It's brutal down there.
And for people who think.
So I'm glad to see all the traffic.
Older people who haven't been around these fields and say, oh, this is a waste of money. Go down on a Saturday, go down, drive down West Street. And they'll get appreciation what they haven't seen in the last three, thirty years because their kids aren't doing it. We don't stagger games because we don't have the time. And and you've said, it's it's a mess. And I've tried to get more parking down there, we can't because it's on the water department property.
I mean, as G A A, we offered up concessions to anybody would take it for West Street. We got a hot dog guy once, we got a couple of people. Big issue where they can't get in there, they can't get out of there, right? We have a concession stand, so whether it's the boosters or the P T A, think of this one, okay? If you're open Saturday from seven o'clock in the morning until eight or nine o'clock at night, Friday night, Sunday. The P T A or the boosters somebody, it's not gonna be me, is taking over that concession stand and it's gonna work.
Starbucks.
It's gonna really work, it'll be.
Is that your vote?
What what you said was that uh somewhere down the road, it's a, it would be a possibility if there was a magic wand with funds to to a field does, the top does get developed as part of this.
Remember, they're gonna have to replace the turf, right, at that point, fifteen, sixteen years from now. If if it was that we were all here talking or that new group decided they wanted to do that, that option isn't off the table, I think.
That's helpful.
You know what I mean, I'm saying, that's what I thought too. I thought this is good for right now, at this period and I'll, hopefully I will be retiring.
We're gonna be on the rail trail, Jim, that's, that's broad, we're gonna get the rail trail. We can walk it up sixty, so all the way.
The last, um, this is more of a, of a um, of a comment down the road a- as you guys move forward, but um in with the state procurement laws of going out to for bids for your designers. And I, I'm sure you you know it, so it recommends, it doesn't require, but it recommends that you follow, I think it's thirty whatever. And that's based on qualifications and um fee. And that you look at that seriously when you are thinking about who you're gonna work with to pull this together because there are, and I can share this information with you at another time.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, yeah, we're gonna bid this project out, but again, right now, we've been working with Gale Associates. They have twenty-seven schools going right now, so. Their prevailing wages, they're working with schools. They're, they're, it's not, you, whatever you, whatever laws or guidelines that that are required of conservation, it's not a curveball. For them.
Well, you're you're planning to follow whatever procedures are required.
And we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to bid this out, we're gonna, cause it's gonna be a bond.
Well, you have to bid the construction for sure, but as far as the design, you don't. As far as the design, you could just stay with Gale. And what I'm suggesting is that I think it would be in the town's best interest and everyone's best interest for competitive fees. But more importantly, for expertise. Because I would, not only is Gale good, but there are specialists out there. That this is all they do. And when you work with them, you work with just them. You get thirty years of one person's experience on the project versus a larger firm. So I'm just, I'm I'm strongly encouraging that you don't settle on.
And we have, we, there's a company in town, Quark, they did Saint John's Prep's field, right? I went down and and talked to these guys when we were in the free phase, asking for help. You know, I borrowed gut tractors and so they, you know, we're gonna go, we went to Redding High School. There's a different group that did that project as well. So yeah, we need to, we need to get the best. For for the project, but at this point, we have, we have spent money from CPC with Gale. And on the other side of it, they they have gone way out of their way to to really show us the benefits, uh how things work, uh how how things get designed into waterways and all the rest of it. But they know we're gonna go through a bid process.
Great, great. I mean, the 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 last part is that um when you're doing this uh there's, there are two, there's a fundamental difference between an engineering firm and a multi-discipline firm. And I, again, I would strongly suggest that the firm you guys end up working with has who leads the design. Um the profession of of landscape architecture versus engineering. Because the landscape architecture is what makes the total form come together so that it does look beautiful. And they do the grading and they do the drainage and they do the stormwater management. Two very fundamental, different approaches to the design of these projects, so I just share that information with you.
And we have this discussion with Gale. Gale, we asked, could we strip this field ourselves, could we do this ourselves? They're not, they're not signing up as a company, they said, we're not signing up to the drainage, the leveling, all the rest of it, if you're stripping the field. I mean, there's, there's all different pieces, but I think that part of it, again.
We should make sure that they have someone possibly on staff or.
Oh, they do.
It's, it's important that they're multi-disciplined versus a consultant, because then.
They're way past it, they have environmental engineering on site.
They're all over the country.
Yeah, I mean, uh again, and going and visiting and without them. Get them giving us four or five contacts and talking to how they managed a project all the way through. And we wanted to know that, say, we got these numbers, we got this information, how good are they? Right, so we checked into some of their projects and talked to people, but we're gonna have to bid it out.
Yeah, I talked to Wesbro, they started out with Gale, I think on the first, they were very happy. They liked the Gale person that was, they were working with Gale, the Gale person went to another company and they stayed with him. They didn't switch companies because they weren't happy with Gale, they just liked the person that that was working at Gale at that time.
That happens.
Even even someone who says, oh, we didn't stay with them, but they were fine, you know?
Meaning that, that's very much it, the relationship you have with that person is is a big part of it. Well, thank you for putting up with my uh questions.
We're here for.
And thank you for coming and sharing all this information, we really appreciate it.
Do you guys have any questions?
I didn't know, I didn't play college football, I I graduated from Georgia.
Do you guys have questions, concerns, issues? Alright, um just for the committee, what we're voting on is to support the project. Um because we have a town um like a town committee that's in charge of it, that's what we voted on in December to follow their recommendation and their lead on it. So what we're doing now is we'll vote whether to support the field as presented. And then we'll allow it to go to the voters in the spring to say whether they approve the use of the CPC funds um for this project. And Sandy did um note that they got support from FinCom, which was kinda surprising because I know they're.
Down on it.
They, yeah, they, they were down.
She was fantastic, they had, we started out with ten minutes, we got forty-five minutes of their time. Uh we answered a lot of questions and I think we really got some real supporters there.
Yeah, and I think one of, one of the parting comments was that the thing that they, they really got their arms around and they appreciated was that a project like this has such a broad impact on the town. It's not to say that, you know, the use of CPC funds hasn't impacted the town in a positive way in the past, it has. But this really addresses a need that the town has and it impacts like three thou- I mean, we have sixteen hundred students in our schools. It's gonna impact all of them in some manner, as well as other communities being able to come here and and play different games and whatnot.
Yeah, and I just like to, since we're on TV, anybody in town, no, but use the opportunity, anybody in town who's really set against this. Because I know there's some people in the finance committee, they always say, we're gonna, we're gonna go in, we're gonna, we're gonna chew this project up. And after listening to the facts and listening to the numbers that the G A gave them, three of them came out of that meeting and said, I've been turned. I I now know the facts on this. So if someone is really, you know, neighborhood adamant, talk to the G A, go to a G A meeting. When you see the facts, you'll see that this is a cost-effective solution, a lot of people don't really realize that, but it is.
And it's a use of CPC funds, you're already paying CPC within your tax rate, it's not an increase to that, it's not going to go up when we do the bond, it's not doing um anything to do with that.
Yeah, and if we get CPC approval, we go through the selectmen on Monday and it gets where it's gonna be for a town vote in May. We will publicize, we'll put it in the paper, we'll put it out on email blast, we'll have at least one, if not two, uh information nights. Where people can come up to the high school and and.
That'd be great.
Yeah, we'll go through it in detail. We'll, we'll have environmental people there or whatever we have to have and we'll go through it.
With regards to the vote and voting to support versus voting to approve and the school committee's role in that. I know my question to you there was late in the day, I don't know if you had any opportunity to look into that.
Well, I think, I think um in your email, you had mentioned speaking to M S C about that, right? Yeah, and I think what the G A A is looking for um right now is really just a show of support, that because they're, they're looking at being able to go to CPC and say, just as they. Board a selectmen. I think the role of the school committee in terms of, and I think Anne wrote it down, there's, there's sort of two purposes of of why a school committee would take a vote on this project.
Right, whether is the impact on the physical plant, right? So how it would, that's our jurisdiction, so how it would impact that. Um and secondly, the impact on our operating budget.
Which you asked questions about, well, would it be maintenance costs?
And and that was the vision.
Right, exactly. Um so what we've done is in, the other key thing to remember is that we have a town committee that we, that was established and we voted um on twelve-six, I had Laura check this, cause I couldn't remember when we did it. So we voted to agree to an, to support the installation of a field. Provided that such a field is recommended by the town turf committee. Um because the donation is being made to the town and it's a town field. It is under the, it techn- and I know it, it doesn't make sense, but technically, we don't control the field per se. We have responsibility for it, but the donation is being made to the town and it's being um and it's being led by a town committee, much like the school building committee. Where it comes to us for support and recommendation, where we voted to rely on the town turf committee, for lack of the proper name.
Stack, stack.
Stack, excuse me, does that make sense?
That does, I didn't recall that we voted on it that way, but I suspect you've got it there, I I thought what we did was allocate, we we voted to uh authorize them to proceed with with going ahead with that, but I didn't think we gave them the authority to vote for, you know, if they say yes, then the school committee is saying yes.
Yeah, we voted to agree to support the installation of a turf field at the high school. Provided that such field is recommended and approved by the town's committee that has been established to study and oversee the project.
And you also voted to support the the beginning of a, of a
Yep.
Particular advisory committee.
That I went on. Yes.
Voted on, that's right.
Yeah.
Well, is there a way we can talk about this again later or something, cause I'm I'm not so.
Well, they'll be, I mean. What's gonna happen is, what what we're doing tonight is we're saying, the school committee supports the project. And we're allowing them to continue on to get support from the other groups within town. And then bring it before the voters to see whether they approve the use of the CPC funds. That's what we're doing.
If they go, if they get CPC approval, which.
Exactly.
Well, I think too, going to the board of selectmen on Monday, if you go there and say you have FinCom approval and you don't say you have school committee approval, I think that sends, I think that would be a really not a great thing. I think we need to be at that meeting Monday night.
Yep, I agree with you.
With the support of the school committee, since it is on our, so it's a town field on our property.
Right, and the donation would be made to the town. I I know it's a lot of moving pieces and and we still have responsibility for the fields and it is our responsibility to make sure that that the, an engineering slash architectural firm, design firm, whatever it is that's going to be responsible for the field takes into account the existing buildings and structures that are there and the impact that any changes to those fields would have.
Those will be open meetings with review and then, you know, someone, uh Barbie would be on that committee. We also Peter Durkey on that committee who's very familiar with contracts and.
And you have Mike Anderson, our facilities guy.
And then Sandy.
Right, is is on that committee itself, right.
But when there's more design information, Mark, and more that, you wouldn't have a problem coming back to the school committee, I think that's what Rob's saying. Cause he wants to make sure that, you know, before final decisions are made, that if it's going to impact the facility here, that he'd like.
There should be a final design at some point, and I think at that point.
And we'll have budget.
Somebody have to approve it.
Sure.
And we'll have operating budget issues, cause we'll need to know that.
Right now, we're in a concept phase, we're pretty much, pretty close to know what we're doing design-wise.
As long as that's clear that what we're approving is this idea, basically, and that we're not approving the final installation of a plan.
No, but the one thing that.
But I don't think the school committee would do that. I don't think the school committee would do that, that would be the town committee.
But I think that, but I think, and this is, I don't know, but I I in talking with with Mike Gilbert, I get the, I get the impression that um his advice was to ask uh our attorney, Naomi, to, if if we as a school committee, you know, should be taking a vote um to approve it, because it does fall into our budget and it does fall under our jurisdiction with the facilities. So it's just, it it's, I I I'm not a lawyer, I don't know.
Right, but with. But we can get that information, but we probably can't resolve it tonight because I have to get the information, I've got it on a note.
That's why I'm asking, do we, can we talk about it later or?
And I think it also, I think it'll also be something that if we engage Naomi, that she needs to speak with town council. To find out, to go that route. Um but I think the issue though is that we have a town committee that we established to do this. And much like the school building committee, they reportedly, they come back and forth to us with grade configuration issues with um all the other things that we had to vote on, I just can't remember what they were now. Um so there's back and forth and that's when we do our voting, but um so as it would impact the physical plant and the operating budget, as, as you look at the operating budget, we're funding maintenance of the fields right now, in in some way, shape or form, whether it's, you know, lining or cutting the grass. And if you read the information, it says that we're gonna be one-fifth of that.
This would benefit the operating budget.
My simple way of doing math is that if you say these numbers are off by a factor of fifty percent. It would be fifty, would have a fifty percent savings of what we're saving, of what we're spending right now. So then it gets back to the plant. So what's the impact on the plant? We're relying on the turf committee to select, to put it out to bid, to select the right engineer, the right everything. And then it would come back to us and say, here's the plan, you know, yea or nay. Um and remember, we voted one committee member on, we have Carol as a non-voting member.
And Mike Anderson is a voting member.
Mike Anderson is a voting member. So we're represented in that.
I mean, once CPC reviews this, Rob, and let's say CPC gives a blessing to it. Right, and it's been to FinCom, it's been to school committee, and then it's, it's gonna come up pretty quickly whether or not it gets a warrant, it's, it's a warrant article. Right, so you're gonna end up having, you know, a few meetings in between that time, but if you're asking, you know, does the school committee get to, uh, you know, review and approve everything in its final form? I mean, I don't know, we have to look at the timing of that, but I will, I have a note there and I will look, I will get back to you on, and on it. But, um, you know, I think the, the hope of the stack committee and it's been the message to all the boards that have been having discussed this is, they really wanna see it go to the voters. They, they really hoping that nobody, no, nobody, you know, uh, stops it, you know, that you know, everybody can in, 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 um, in concept, think that this is a good project for the town and that they'd like to see it.
And I hope, I hope I'm-
And then if the voter says no, then, then, then that's the will of the people.
I hope I'm clear, we're on, on board with that completely.
Okay.
I mean, to get to the town for voting on it.
Okay.
Um.
You just wanna know what the school committee's responsibilities.
In terms of a final vote or not, and a vote that matters or just support, um, yeah.
Remember, like, there's been a lot of committees that this isn't the perfect, I mean, conservation commission, we're, we're gonna be close to some wetlands. But we're already there now, so they, I mean, there are a lot of committees that have little issues that are, you know, pack and wreck. We don't have any really major, you know, play in this. We're gonna have to slow down all our potential projects for the next ten years for bonds. But all the committees, even though they're not recreation wanted, realize this is a good project for the town. It really is, it's gonna help the community, it's gonna do something to stabilize our, our fields, keep our pro- Like you said, all the neighbors, all the neighbors are making improvements, um, ten years ago Masco was die of need of improvement in the school, no one wanted to pay for it, property values went down, it goes twenty million. So we're, we're in a fight for, we're in a fight with all the other communities to make our community at a standard with them, and this will be a way to approach that. I'm not saying we're gonna accomplish that.
Can I, can I ask, so, um, Monday night I'm gonna be sitting here at seven o'clock. Am I telling the school, am I telling the selectmen the school committee isn't-
They're gonna vote.
We're gonna vote. Um, so yeah, that, that's why I went on the whole, what we're voting for, um, is to support, um, the project. And then it allow, um, them to, it'll allow the turf committee to continue on to get, um, it on the warrant. To allow the voters to decide whether they wanna allocate the CPC funds or not.
Correct.
And then we get into the nitty-gritty of who does what and what the approval and review process is.
Well, the wording of the warrant, if you wanna address that.
Right. So the chair will entertain a motion to, for the school committee to support the turf project as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thanks, guys.
So on Monday night, you can go and say that- On Monday night, you can go and say that you have our approval.
Thank you.
It was a five-nothing vote.
My only concern is Mark's friends are gonna, might move to Georgetown now.
Well, thanks for telling us that after the vote.
We would welcome them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, moving right along, okay. So, superintendent's report?
Yeah, I don't have anything, but I would just, uh, point out, I hope you had a chance to read the, um, NRC, the NASC report. Um, you know, they commend, uh, they commended, uh, the town on appropriating, you know, the funds for the, for the school and for the eighty-five thousand dollars for the feasibility study. And actually, they didn't have any further recommendations. They did continue the school accreditation, did continue the warning because they said they would, they do that until all concerns are satisfactorily, satisfactorily resolved. Um, Peter's beginning a, a process and has been engaged in that, we'll, we'll put him on another agenda coming up and he can talk about what the process is getting ready for the next accreditation, but I thought it was also interesting where it says, um, school's accreditation status will be reviewed when the committee considers the pre-self-study report. Which made me think that maybe they, they might review our accreditation and perhaps consider the warning status prior to everybody finally moving into the school. That's kinda where I was thinking they were gonna go. So I think that's good news. Um, Peter and his staff work very hard to, um, work with the liaison and to, and to, and to get this process um, continue to make it, uh, improve as well as to start the new process, so we'll, we'll get more information from you, but I just wanted to make sure that you, you saw that this was the latest report and that they did come in the town, um, on the funding that they have put forward and did not make any further, uh, recommendations.
Peter, just a question for you, I don't wanna put you on the spot. Um, substantive change in policy? The last bullet from the bottom? Inordinate user fees? I'm not expecting you to know what it is. Does that concern you, based on the changes that were just made?
No.
No, okay.
No, because they're, they're lower than the last time, no matter, with the increase, they're still lower than the last time we, we ordered.
Okay, fine, I just-
That's true.
That made me nervous when I saw that. To me, it's inordinate, but maybe not others. Okay.
Okay, so I can do the budget.
Alright, so, um, next up is to adopt the budget. We do that in the regular session, we had the public hearing with a packed room, not, um, lots of, not, lots of public input. Uh, not, um, so, I'm gonna take that all as passive consent and that everyone is thrilled with our budget. So, um-
Widespread agreement.
Um, yeah, Pam, that was good, widespread agreement, um. So at this point, um, I think the best thing to do is, and just take a vote on approving the, our overall budget number that we presented to FinCom, that we've, um, discussed for the past few weeks, that budget and finances talked about for probably months at this point and know it by heart, um, unless you guys have any further discussion or commentary that you wanna go through. No? Alright, so. To the, make sure I get-
What top is that?
D. Sorry. Alright, so the chair will entertain a motion to adopt the FY two thousand fourteen budget as presented, um, in the amount of thirteen million one hundred eighty-nine dollars and eighty.
Oh, eighty-nine thousand.
One, thirteen million one hundred eighty-nine thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars.
Right.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Last year Jim had us, um,
You could, you could-
Do you want us to vote the, um, salaries as well? He had us do it.
Making difference to me, I did break it down if you wanted to do it that way, but it doesn't make any difference.
Good night, thank you, thank you. Um, so, the salaries would be ten-nine-three-four-oh-seven-nine?
Yep.
Okay, so, what we're doing now is just voting the separate pieces of it, from, just from a technical standpoint. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve the salaries included in the overall, uh, FY fourteen district budget in the amount of ten million nine hundred thirty-four thousand seventy-nine dollars as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You don't have that number, I have it written down if you want. Because we seg- segregated out the sped.
Thank you, that's why I'm like looking at it, I can't do that in my head.
I bet you could.
I knew it was thirteen, I knew it was thirteen too, but I couldn't break it down. Um, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the non-salary line item of two million two hundred fifty-five thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars for the FY fourteen budget as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Um, alright. What else do we have?
The subcommittee reports.
Any sub- Are there any subcommittee reports? I'm just gonna say, are there any, cause we just met last week.
Yeah.
None?
We haven't, yeah.
None.
Yeah, we have meetings scheduled.
We have a meeting scheduled on the Wednesday, uh, the thirteenth, a governance meeting, and we're gonna discuss AUP policy, acceptable use policy, and what was the other policy?
Lice.
Lice.
Sounds lovely.
We also have a safety meeting scheduled, um, with the police department and the fire department on Thursday, March fourteenth.
Perfect.
Ninety.
Alright, old business.
We just did that.
Uh, yeah, no, I had one other item for old business. Um, we have to sign the warrant every two weeks. And Julie sends out an email, like, usually Monday, Tuesday-ish, but we've been having trouble getting signatures. Everybody, please check your email and respond. Cause the biggest thing, she'll call me and say, I don't have signatures. She's like, and no one's responded. So I don't know who, if people are out of town, I know people travel, I know people are busy, so check your email once a day and please respond to her. If you don't know and you can't commit, just say, I'm traveling, I, I'm whatever. And I can't commit, so she'll go down the list and say, please come in and please do whatever. Um, she's really good at leaving it out, um, it used to be a bookcase, it's a bench now. Um, so if you go to the side door and ring the buzzer, they'll let you in and you can go in and sign it.
Oh.
So just, her note to me was, have them please at least respond so I know what to do. Um, alright, that was it for old business, cause we already adopted the budget. Um, the acceptance of a Pembroke donation.
Right, we have a, we have a couple of, um, Pembroke, uh, couple of Pembroke donations.
And once again-
Yep, one is from Mr. and Mrs. Cobb, who generally don't, generously donated two hundred dollars, um, for the purchase of an iPad. So we really appreciate that donation and, um, I urge you to accept it.
Um, so the chair will entertain a motion to accept the two hundred dollar donation for an iPad from the Cobb family with gratitude.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is a Pembroke, another Pembroke donation.
Actually, it was a fundraiser done by the Georgetown Building Supply and Stonyard.
And Pembroke.
They ran a fundraiser and they, um, decided to, um, they were raising funds in memory of Sandy Hook. And then, um, they, uh, have forwarded these funds to be used both at the Pearlie and Pembroke School. So it was a hundred fifty dollar donation.
Very nice.
It was very nice. So the chair will entertain a motion to accept the hundred fifty dollar donation from the Georgetown Building Supply and Stonyard for Pearlie and Pembroke Schools with gratitude.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Motion carries. Uh, once again, the generosity, it, I don't think we've had a week that we haven't had a donation, which is just amazing to me. Um, and it's very, very much appreciated. Okay, next is the Baker Adams process and timeline. So Laura included a summary of the, um, proposed dates. The big thing with this is to use graduation as your end date, you have to be able to award them on graduation and move back from there. So it looks like, eh, yeah. We get the applications, um, on May tenth, so it looks like you could have it at, before the five-twenty-three meeting. If that works for everybody. Or you can have a separate meeting.
I know, that's what I was, I was hoping to do, is have a separate meeting.
Okay.
Cause I think last year it just, I don't think we, um, it just seemed like we were a little pressed on time. So maybe a separate meeting.
Okay.
Because then we, I think we were like twenty minutes into the start of our school committee meeting.
It, it always was a separate meeting, and then I think as the, cause it was a pretty, it was a lo- kind of a longstanding committee, everybody was sort of familiar with the process. So I think that's why they went to before the meeting, cause it was, you know, kind of an established process, but you remember, we got a lot of new people, so.
And you'll have a new member.
So we probably should go and do a, a special meeting.
So the meeting, the, um, May meetings are the ninth and the twenty-third. So you're going to receive, um, the packages on the tenth.
Of April?
Of May.
Of May?
Yeah, so you would, um, you really have, I mean,
Well, let's see, I have to have it. Um, can, can, is, how much time do you feel you need to read them? I guess that's the, that's the question. So if you've got them on the tenth and you, you had the week of the, would you prefer to have a meeting the week of the thirteenth? Knowing you have a meeting the following week, or would you prefer to have two meetings in, on the week of the twentieth?
So we get them on-
Guess that's the question, right?
You're gonna receive all the, you're gonna receive the applications on the tenth, which is a Friday.
Right.
I would like to have a week to review, to read the applications. I, I think a full week is necessary for, for me. Anyway, if we have the same volume that we had last year.
It's a lot of reading.
It is.
You read the essays and you wonder.
Yeah.
I know, that weekend, um, I may not be in town.
Okay.
So.
So it looks like you're looking at two meetings during the week of the twentieth.
Okay.
You have a regular meeting on the twenty-third, um, so the twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second.
There's a lot of school, there's like an art and film festival on the twenty-first, which is, you know, good to go. There's a high school chorus and corral on the twenty-second, and then with the school committee on the turd, on the twenty-third. Monday, the twentieth is a possibility for me, but I don't know if it is for others.
It is for me.
It does not matter for me.
You don't wanna come back and-
I am merely facilitating.
Good, we could have it at Pearlie if you want.
For you, PM and Rob?
Yes.
This is Monday, May twenty?
Yeah. Does that work?
Yeah.
Yes. That doesn't happen often, that all of a sudden, we all-
So seven o'clock at-
Is seven o'clock for you? I, I mean, I, I can do it at any time, so. Okay, so we're doing Baker Adams, right?
At Pearlie. Usually it's the teacher's conference room or the teacher's lunchroom.
Teacher's lunchroom or the conference room.
Okay. Okay, so that's-
So it'll be seven PM?
Seven PM.
And then the next one is twenty-third.
Yep.
Right.
Okay, so-
And the only other thing I'm wondering about is, it, there seemed to be some glitches with the process last year. Right, in terms of like the rating and what waited and how do you wanna handle that?
What I've done in the past, but it's up to, it's, it's up to you, completely up to you guys, is, um, it's difficult, because it's not a, it's not a defined rating system, like we rate on the five criteria. But my perception of community service versus Pam's versus Rob's and Alana's and Barbie's is different. Um, it, it is all over the-
We do define it, and you can put it on a spreadsheet, but then we can discuss.
Right, you can define it, but you can, but you can read it and interpret it as-
More subjective evaluation assessment after you.
Well, some of the issue last year was it, degree of weight? I, I thought, I thought there was some issues with the weight, like the essay, how much does the essay weight versus, and then there was a whole issue of financial aid.
Yeah, and financial-
How do you determine?
And financial needs always been an issue, because we don't get a financial aid form.
Right, there's different information.
And everyone fills it out a little differently.
Yes.
Um, and it, it's, it's extremely subjective.
Right. Which is why discussion is really important. Well, what are the students being told when they are applying for this?
Curious about the, what's the application say?
That's, I think, I think we need to make sure that whatever we're doing to evaluate, we're evaluating in accordance with what the students believe they're being evaluated for, and what they choose to emphasize. Now, anybody can misread or miss, or interpret, obviously there, anything we put in an application will be open to interpretation. Nonetheless, I think it would be in our best interest perhaps to, maybe at our next meeting, review the application that the students are receiving so that we can have a discussion about how we want to rate and rank the applications, once we've looked at what the application says. Can we do that?
You can. Um, you can? I mean, another, another option is you could have, like, governance or some, somebody review it and then come back to the committee with a recommendation as to what the weight might be.
Yeah, that might be.
Really just depends, it, it's, it's hard, like, Rob and I had that conversation, it, you know, it's like, that's a delicate balance between like what kinds of work can get done here and is, is it efficient? You know, um, but, you know, maybe that's something that could be done fairly efficiently here, you know?
Why don't we include, why don't we have governance look at it? Include the application in the package, so everyone in the next-
I can, we can definitely include the package.
So then-
We're meeting this week.
Yeah, so if governance can have it at the next meeting.
Yeah, sure.
Um, so that way-
Laura, could we email, could we email that application to the, to the members? Because in preparation for that meeting, perhaps everybody should have a chance to look at the application, and then if you have comments or things you'd like governance to or questions, you could forward them to governance.
So, yeah, that's, yeah, actually, that's, that is a good idea. Um, so are you meeting, um,
Thirteenth.
The thirteenth?
Yes.
Um.
And then we have a meeting on the fourteenth.
Okay, so, and then there's a meeting on the fourteenth. So will you be in a- Okay, so, and then there's a meeting on the fourteenth. So will you be in a position to talk, do you wanna be in a position to talk about it on the fourteenth?
Sure, what time are we meeting on the thirteenth? I was just gonna ask you that. What date, I'm sorry?
Eight-thirty?
Yeah, we should be able to have it.
Can you, you can email that out to every, so what's gonna happen is Laura will email that out to everyone tomorrow, what the application looks like. You'll have to get feedback back to governance um, by.
As quickly as possible.
By Tuesday night, because they're meeting on Wednesday morning.
Can you put that in the email?
Um, I am not here next Thursday night, so Rob's in charge. Um, I have something to go to. I, which is fine, have, because that'll, everyone, you guys have all been through it once, so you know what you're looking at. So that'll be, which is fine.
The question I have too on those applications, is there, if we do have a question on them? Are we, as a committee member, allowed to reach out to the um, applicant?
I, I would say not. I would say it's the student's responsibility to provide you with the information you need. And you need to make a judgment based on, cause otherwise it's not fair to all the other students who don't have that same opportunity.
How would I be, I wouldn't be sitting in on this meeting, right?
You wouldn't, Cole. Although we love your input, I don't.
No, but you know what? Laura, we should make sure that email the application Nicole as well. And provide your feedback to the committee.
Because I think it's clear, if you think, you know, this is something students are gonna understand.
Yeah, so you should, yeah, you should really look at it and be critical of it and say, I'm confused about.
Or even give us your input on how you understand the questions. What do you think we're looking for when you read the application? That would be really useful. Again, it's the, it's the perspective of one student, which may differ. So any information gathering you can get from anybody you know who plans to apply, how they understand.
Yeah, no, and we found, like in the past, our student reps have given us great information, so anything you can gather and bring to the meeting.
Well, I could honestly show it to my student council and have them review it. And by the next meeting that like, um, and within a week, that'll be their homework or whatever, to just review it and just. See their feedback on what they understand as questions and I can just, you know.
Yeah, no, that would be great, you know? And maybe their, their perception, what they think they're gonna be evaluated on. I think that was to Alana's point. We, we may say, this is what we emphasize, or it says in the application. They were being evaluated for something.
And not the others, I know, cause some people didn't even talk about community service where others would.
Yes, it was very clear that they thought.
Or they would consider like babysitting, community service, whereas I wouldn't consider that if you weren't, if you were getting paid for, you know, they, they, I don't know.
It's completely subjective, it's, and it's tough, it's very, it's not an easy.
We're trying to follow the intent of Baker Adams himself, is what we're trying to do and.
Which Laura always includes that nice paragraph about what he's, right.
Alright. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the Baker Adams process and timeline. With the revision of adding a meeting on May twentieth at seven o'clock at Pearly, um, to select the recipients.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Alright, okay, and we are nearly done, I think. Thank you, that was on my list. Okay, just a couple of housekeeping items. PTA fashion show is on May second. And they need um, middle, high school volunteers um, to model. And they, um, from what I was able to gather from the um, notes that Cheryl O'Leary sends out, the applications are due by tomorrow. And you get community service if you're a high school student, so.
They still need some high school boys and girl, middle, high school boys and girls.
And if you email.
Jen Greenfield.
Jen Greenfield at A-J-J-E-Greenfield, all one word, at yahoo dot com. She will provide you with all the information that you can need.
Right, and they probably could use some school committee models as well.
Alright, good for them. Moving right along.
What, no takers?
Or a superintendent.
They're hitting me hard.
The GEF um, gala, their main fundraiser is on April sixth at the Black Swan and it's fire nice theme. So find GEF reps so you can get your tickets. Um, and we have.
You can get some tickets online too, right?
I believe so. I, yeah, I think I saw that on. The middle school notes. Cole mentioned earlier, the middle school play is April fifth and six, um, Friday night at seven and Saturday at two o'clock. And finally, we already talked about a couple of meetings that we have coming up, governance next week on Wednesday and safety on Thursday. And we have our budget presentation to um, Finance and Advisory Board on March twentieth.
Oh, you know what, Anne, I'm trying to find it, but there's a National Honor Society.
Next Tuesday, the twelve.
Tuesday, the twelve.
And what's the time for that budget presentation on March?
I'm guessing seven o'clock.
I would say seven o'clock.
I have seven.
That's something that we all need to attend.
Budget and finance, definitely, um, if you can.
On March twentieth?
Yeah, on March twentieth, if you can come, great, but I also understand we have a, we've had five meetings this month.
Is that here?
Yeah, it will be here. No need for executive session?
No, no.
Alright, so chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Alright, we're adjourned.
Here, everybody.
Alright, everybody, have a great week.